Good evening and welcome this evening. Thank you for coming to participate in our second redistricting work session. Albany County is in Region Two. And we are happy to have Representative Ocean Andrew, Representative Kathy Connolly, and Representative Carly Provenza here with us this evening. Senators Chris Rothfuss and Senator Dan Furphy are still on the floor during, basically in the legislative session right now with the special session that they're having. And so if time allows, maybe they'll be able to participate via Zoom. But I certainly appreciate the time and the interest that you're taking tonight to allow us to have a general discussion of what we have proposed in front of us at this time. As you may be aware, Senator Rothfuss has presented a plan which is displayed here on the screen. We also have maps that basically show the, his proposed plan. And certainly welcome any other plans that anyone might be interested in presenting this evening. Or just general discussion as to how they see this plan has been placed. And any questions or suggestions that you might have. Again, this evening, we have Adam Wales from the Albany County IT Director, who was working in conjunction with Riley Shogren from the library. We thank them for setting this up. And for those of you that are participating on Zoom this evening, welcome. And we hope that you will offer any feedback or ideas or suggestions that you might have this evening. I would like to ask Representative Kathy Connolly to give us an overview as to where we are during this process. Kathy?
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Can you all hear me? Yep, good. Okay. Um, we went over this at the first public meeting about, was it about six weeks ago, Jackie?
Okay, am I going out now? All right, thank you. We got together about six weeks ago. And honestly, we were, I think, the second region in the state to have a public meeting. And it was before a public portal was even available, which I think became available later that week. So I thought I'd just spend a couple of minutes reviewing what the redistricting process is and where we are in that process right now. And again, let me just say that Senator Furphy and Senator Rothfuss are really disappointed that they are still on the floor of the Senate and not here tonight. And especially with Senator Rothfuss, as he's the one who drew the draft plan that we have in front of us. Okay, so where we are, and here comes Representative Sherwood. And so that's why you have all of your representatives here, is even though we are still in special session, we're not on the floor right now. And so we could be here. So where we are in the process. As you know, after a decennial census, we are obligated to do redistricting. We're also obligated to do it by numbers that are provided to us by the US Census Bureau. Those numbers came in relatively late in comparison to other decennial census. And we got them, I think, in around September. Those numbers told us how many people that we have in the state. And then we are obligated to assure that we have a series of kind of obligations. And that our districts, both federally, which for us is irrelevant, right? But within our state legislature are proportional in terms of representation. So we are obligated to take a look at our House and Senate districts. So how that happens varies between state and state. But we, like most states, our legislature does it. And then there's two choices, whether or not there's a special committee or a standing committee that does that redistricting. And it was the decision to have our standing committee referred to as corporations and political subdivisions to be responsible for the redistricting process. And ultimately, to come up with a bill that will go before the full legislature in February. So ultimately, what will happen is in February, and now I'm going to walk us back a little bit. In February, there will be a bill before the legislature. And the legislature will debate that bill that has in it the new lines based on the census data. So in order to draft that bill, the corporations and political subdivision meeting had a series of meetings, one of which established the state into regions. And that the regions, and then the marching orders was that the regions would have an allotted number of House Representatives and Senators. And regions were to work together and establish a plan. Now, lucky for us, we are Region Two, and Region Two is Albany County. It's as simple as that, all right? That's slightly different than what we have right now because Rock River, right, is being represented by a representative and a senator who mostly represents Carbon County. Okay, but we were given Region Two, Region Two again wholly Albany County. Now I want to talk a little bit about this map because that's going to become relevant. Not the map you see right in front of you, but the broader picture still, all right? Because that's going to get to one of the issues that's coming up. So the state was divided into 10 regions, right? And again, we were Albany County, Region Two, four reps, two senators. We were happy. We are happy. We're still happy, right? But now remember, there are 10. To start with, again, the number one criteria is proportional representation. And the way proportional representation has been defined, honestly, through a series of court cases across the United States is pretty much within plus or minus 5% of the ideal. All right, so that's relevant, plus or minus 5% of the ideal. So with about, what about 580,000 people divided by the 60 House districts that we have right now, you get 97,700 people, whatever, something like that. 9,600 people is the ideal district, right? Plus or minus 5%, you're totally okay. Outside of the plus or minus 5%, that's an issue, right? Know that it has happened. It has happened elsewhere. But that's when the courts take a real good look at what is going on. Because plus or minus 5% kind of assures that proportional representation that we honestly all believe in. Okay, going back to the Wyoming map with 10 regions in it. To start with, three of those regions were outside of the plus or minus 5%. And I would argue that a fourth needs to be included in there because that was Laramie County. Laramie County was allocated 10 representatives by that map when the reality is they have grown by over 9,000 people, which means that they really should have 11. However, it stayed within that minus 5%. So that's why it's not officially outside of the bounds. Okay, I'm telling you that because even though, like we talked about at our last meeting, that we were happy with our four and two, four reps and two senators. We just needed to figure out how to draw the lines within the city to accommodate. And we'll talk about a little bit what's happened within our county since the last census. But in this past six weeks, what has been recognized is that around the state, there needs to be kind of incursions, if you want to call it. I called it poaching last time, right? Poaching into like other districts in order for a region to be able to get the numbers that they need. And you can imagine, and so I'll just tell you like what's going on as one example. The Bighorn Basin, all right, you know, you go from right north of Fremont County, Thermop, going up into Cody, they've lost a lot of people, right? They've lost a lot of people, right? They don't want to lose their number of representatives and senators, right? So where are they going to go, right? Some of the argument is you push into Teton County. You're going over a mountain pass. I don't particularly like that. Go over to Neutrona County, is there really what's called a community of interest like we talked about last time between Thermop and Casper? Maybe not. But whatever. When you have the Bighorn Basin, looking for additional population, pushing it out, one of the arguments is until our western border. Western border then comes down, picks up in Sweetwater County, hey honey, picks up in Sweetwater County. Sweetwater County then pushes over, right? Picking up into Carbon County, and guess what? You've kind of come up to our boundary right there, right? And so there is lots of discussion now about Albany County where there hadn't been six weeks ago. One of the discussion points at the last corporation committee meeting is that if any region wants to take or give to other regions, there needed to be conversations. Know that I've had lots of conversations, but not one that has said, this is a formal request of Region Two. And so know that Senator Rothfuss and I have been appointed to be the Region Two point people. So that's where I would be a person that you'd talk with. But not once has anyone spoken to me kind of more formally. But know that Albany County is now in play, if you want to call it that, when it comes to this kind of movement, right? That needs to happen because the regions that were established by that original map are out of whack, right? Three of them are officially out of whack, and again, that fourth one. So where we are in the process, we had our original meeting. Our original meeting, everyone in the room, we didn't take a vote, but seemed to agree. We like the idea of keeping Albany County whole, right? And we like the established 60 reps, 30 senators, right? Know that that's a little bit in play as well, but we all liked that. And that we also understood, and now I'm going to move to Albany County. We also knew at that point that our lines would need to change and they would need to change significantly. And the reason is because of the shift in population. And that shift in population in particular took place in District 13 and District 45. And we can make a, I think, not too much of a guess that it was because of the undercount of the census with housing units that homed students and faculty who were not here during the census. My own house is a perfect example. Lots of homes in my neighborhood, we have basement apartments, right? No one was there during the census count. Eric, a visiting assistant professor, music is there right now. That's pretty common for me, right? So I'm a perfect example of the undercount that happened in my neighborhood and in 45. So we lost 1,500 people in 13, about 1,100 in 45, right? I understand that the city is going to appeal the count, right? The city's going to appeal that count, but, and I appreciate that. And I am confident we're going to win that. But that's not relevant in terms of redistricting. We have to go with the numbers that we have right now. And we have to draw the lines based on those numbers. Okay, I've talked a lot. Are there any kind of questions or comments about where we are right now? About the process? Oh, I'll tell you one other thing. This special session has caused a bit of a wrinkle in terms, who's just laughed? Has caused a wrinkle in terms of time availability, honestly, right? But we still have an obligation to do our redistricting regardless of, and I'm just going to call it the distraction of this special session. That our deadline for having a map to the Legislative Service Office, and I see Mr. Michael Swank is on here. And if we have any questions for LSO, I'm sure, hopefully, Mr. Swank can jump in and answer them. That we were given a deadline of November 5th to have a draft map to the LSO office so that they could then distribute it to committee members so that they could think about it for their next meeting. Now, there is no next meeting that's scheduled at this point. That special session came in and kind of mucked it up. But again, still, we still have that February deadline that is an absolute drop dead with all of the holidays. And typically, the work is done by mid-December, mid-December, right? Okay, so we have an obligation to get a draft map to LSO by November 5th for our region. And so that's where we are in the process. And just to know that even though we as a region can put together a map that we have a pretty good consensus on. And in all honesty, the six of us like the map that you see before you, right? Bipartisan county-city, we're okay with it. But know that ultimately, it will go to the committee. And that's that Corporations and Political Subdivisions Committee, which will draft a bill. They can accept or reject our map, right? And then it will go to the full body. And then the full body will debate it in both chambers in February. And lines can change, and they did last time. Okay, any questions? All right, so what we thought we'd do tonight, again, this is a listening session. I just kind of overviewed where we are. But we want to hear your thoughts. And know that I've had kind of an interesting preliminary conversation with the good former Senator Massey, who's got some ideas. And those are around the university dorms. And what, that's, I think, it's one of the largest census blocks. It's certainly the largest census block in Albany County, right? But it's also one of the largest census blocks in the entire state, as you can imagine, right? You wiggle that, you've got some playroom with some other lines. So we are, and I am here to take notes on ideas that you have, questions, ideas, anything along those lines. And Jackie is going to run this portion and get people up here. And I'm going to start taking notes.
First of all, Representative Connolly, I'd like to ask if Michael Swank had any additional information to add at this time or if we can open it up to public comment. If that's the case, then maybe former Representative Massey would like to come up forward and offer some comments that he has.
I see Mr. Swank.
Okay. Thank you, Michael, for being with us this evening.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Michael Swank with the Legislative Service Office. The only thing I wanted to add was to give a little context to what Representative Connolly noted about the committee's upcoming meeting. At the October 6th, excuse me, pardon me. At the October 6th meeting, they had kind of two marching orders. One was to have regions develop their plans and submit them by November 5th, which is correct. And to also potentially have a meeting in November to get an initial look at plans prior to discussing these in more detail on December 1st and 2nd, which is their tentatively scheduled next official meeting. However, obviously, the special session has thrown that into a little bit of a question mark. And while the November 5th date still stands, and that is the request of the committee, we are not clear as to whether the committee will meet in November prior to the December 1st and 2nd meeting. If they do not meet, I would expect additional meetings either in December or potentially January to do extra vetting of plans, either regional plans or a statewide plan.
Thank you, Michael, for that information. Mike?
Does it go up high enough? Thanks. I did some number crunching on my own, you know, based upon the article that was in the Boomerang, as well as this very helpful interactive map that was on the county website. And thought about what could be done, what changes would need to occur to keep the district maps that we have now. That's no comment on the proposal that's in front of us. It's, and that has been vetted. The numbers work out there. My understanding is that they're solid. LSO has had a chance to look at it as well. So I'm a little hesitant to throw something else out. That's why I went to Kathy and to Chris and just pitched the idea. But this is what I had pitched to them. But keep in mind, this still hasn't been vetted yet. But if we wanted to look at a possible scenario to keep the districts the way they're lined up now for the most part, is to take the boundary of what's now Senate District 9, which has House District 13 and 45 in it, and to move it over to the dorms, which, as someone had mentioned, is a very large census block. Right now, the dividing line between Senate District 9 and Senate District 10, and the two House districts that are seated in both of those is 15th Street. So this would be a proposal for Senate District 9 to come east across 15th Street and take the dorms and put it into that Senate district. It's a census of about 1,600 people. And by doing that, by bringing it over to Senate District 9, then it takes both Senate districts and puts them within the 5% margin of deviation. So it would fit from that perspective. The other interesting part of it is, is with the university building the new dorms, which are on the west side of 15th Street. A lot of these students are going to come over to that district anyway within the next year or two. So in reality, what this is, what this proposal's doing is reflecting where these students are going to wind up, probably by 2022 or most of them, in any event. So that was the idea that I pitched, a possible alternative to what we see up there. Again, though, I emphasize, underline, put bull print "possible." Chris, I talked with earlier today on the phone while he had a downtime waiting for some bills to come out onto the floor, took down the information, and I think he's going to get with the rest of the delegation here as well as with LSO and see if this is a viable alternative. So thanks.
Are there other comments or suggestions?
It's nice to be in the height between the two. It's already set for me. Ryan Schuster, City Councilman, Ward 3. Actually, the dorms are in my ward right now. And with them being built across 15th, I thought that, yeah, that problem was automatically going to be taken care of. But I don't think it'll be done in two years. You're really optimistic. I think if they get done in four years, I'll be darn impressed on that with the size of it. And they did a presentation at the city council also showing what it would look like and everything. And it looks phenomenal, but we'll see with that. So I like what's been presented by Chris and everything. Just want to say I support that. And I think the problem will work itself out. I don't, my biggest question was, would they do a redistrict midterm in five years? Or they're going to wait another 10 years till the next census? Okay, that was just my biggest one. Because yes, we are going to move a very large group of people across 15th into the next district before the next census comes. So it's going to change dramatically, I feel, in four or five years. Thank you.
The example I would give that's comparable is the developments that happened out around Walmart. They came up real quickly, and we don't redistrict. Oh, sorry. I was just giving an example that happened in our community, which is the developments that happened out near Walmart. And other places see it in terms of boom and bust with, you know, what are called man camps when oil and gas come through. And there's no redistricting that's redone then either.
And I don't know how much of that information is out there, but we have a little bit of sewer problem for the north end of town, which isn't the Walmart area. It's basically straight down harney that we are not allowing any more permits. And there's several subdivisions that are going to go up clear on the east and north end of town. So you're going to see another boom there once the, and that's why Reynolds was tore up so long this year, was for that. So when that's all done, then they'll allow building permits to go again. And I know there's a lot of them waiting in the wings for that one to open up. So you're going to see another jump in another district just because the city will be expanding north and east.
Great. Thank you, Brian.
Other comments or suggestions from the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to offer a comment? Sir?
Are you saying yes to me, Jackie?
Susan will be with you in just a moment. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ken Chastick, and I like this plan very much. As I understand it, Mike, maybe you can correct me. Right now, this is balanced with the students being counted in. I guess the yellow one is 46, whatever we're going to call that. I don't know what the numbers are anymore because they're moving around. Well, so.
I mean, there's students everywhere.
Yeah, the dorms are in the yellow one, I thought.
So what we're looking at in terms of color here, purple would be what is currently House District 45. 46 is in green.
Okay.
14 is the maroon color, and what will be 13 would be in yellow.
It just seems like we need, I like this plan very much. I'm very much in support of it. I think we need to plan for the numbers we have right now. Understand there's going to be some changes in the future. I would also encourage us to say that we should not have to give up any, any piece of our county to anybody else. Well, every one of those districts is slightly under ideal. If anything, we need to get more people, right? So I think we have a very strong argument to take, accept this as is and not give any parts away. No, you know, we need to be, one of the other criteria for redistricting is to try and keep counties together to make the clerks' job so easy, much easier on election night, not to figure out who voted and what county and add it all up. It's a nightmare to do that. So if they're all in one county, it's very easy to administer the election. So I think we have two very strong arguments that we need to keep this as is and not give up any population and not take anything away. Let's be our own unit. Thank you.
Susan, would you like to make your comment?
Thank you, Jackie. I had a question for Mike Massey. And the question is, you are envisioning the dorms in the Wasatch Center complex as being a jog to be included in the Southern District. Is that correct? Rather than the 15th Street moving to some other street all the way up to the northern part of Laramie. Is that correct?
And again, it would be based upon the current map. So this proposal, again, if it indeed beats the muster after crunching the numbers, would move those dorms, which is about 1,600 people, over to over to directly across the street, not directly coming there, I can move the dorms, they'll stay, the dorms will stay there. But the people would be counted in the district that's now across Fifteenth Street, which is District Thirteen. Okay. It's adjacent. It's not like a, it'll be its own little island. What you would see in the district line then, which now runs the tire length of Fifteenth Street, which separates House District Thirteen from House District Fourteen south of Grand and House District, oh, Fourteen north of Grand and House District Forty-six south of Grand. It would just draw, it would just be a little bump into House District Fourteen from House District Thirteen.
Thank you for that clarification.
Are there other questions or comments from participants on Zoom?
Jackie, this is Andy Somerville. I've got a question.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. So just looking at the map and being the, the city council member from West Laramie, I have to say I'm, I'm deeply troubled about cutting it out of essentially a city block and, and putting it in towards the county. And I guess the concern is West Laramie has always struggled to be considered part of the community. And I think we've worked really hard to form a strong bond in Ward One with, with the west side and West Laramie and then adding that, that piece of the tree area to it. And it's worked well since that's been done. And so I guess my question to the representatives is, the community of interest concept that was discussed at the last meeting, it seems to me that there's definitely a community of interest when you consider the urban versus the rural and, and the needs. And, and I, I am concerned that there is an idea out there that West Laramie doesn't maybe fit the city's needs. But I would say it certainly does. So I'm wondering if, if I could hear just a little bit of the discussion of, of why maybe we're cutting that piece off and putting it into a very rural district. And I know that we're doing that in the red zone as well. Instead of formulating this to have three, essentially three city districts and then one very large rural district for the rest of Albany County, to me, that would make more sense when considering the, the principle of community of interest.
Andy, I could take a stand with that. I mean, you bring up a really good point. And so just to be, you know, fully transparent about what this map does differently.
Thanks. All right, Andy, can you hear me now?
I sure can.
Um, so I want to start with being fully transparent about what this map that you're looking at does differently than where the lines are drawn right now. And there are, I'd say, two significant differences and then some significant wiggles. And one of them, and if you don't mind, I'm going to get up and walk and show you where it is. Take the mic. Okay. Take the mic. All right. Okay. So here's the difference. And Adam, okay, Adam, can you kind of bring it in a little bit? Nope, the other way. Sorry. Bring it out. Okay. Bring it out. Okay. So right now, forty-five goes out through the city limits. Right? The new, and that's what you're talking about right now, and your concern about forty-five no longer going out to the end of the city limits.
Right.
That uses the river as the boundary. So kind of we would accept that as a real boundary kind of thing. And then it pushes forty-five, which used to kind of, kind of go across the tracks and go to nine, pushes it instead to fifteen. Right?
Right.
Okay. What you'll note in here is what used to be House District Thirteen. House District Thirteen was this inverted L in the middle of the city. And now, could you bring it in, Adam? Okay. Yeah. Oh, sorry. I'll get my denounce right. Okay. It was an inverted L in the middle of the city that went like this and very high population density. Right? Really high population density until we lost fifteen hundred people with the undercount, in all honesty. Right? So what this map does is it pushes thirteen into census blocks that it has never been in before. Right? Giving thirteen, right, to forty-five, to the district that Representative Prevenza has right now. And then the northern part of it to where Senator Massey lives up in the W Hill north of Reynolds area, right? And that brings fourteen down. And thirteen is a wholly new district now, east of Fifteenth. Kind of going out to Washington Park, Corfell Hill. Thirteen is wholly new. Now, what this does that it didn't do in the past and what looked okay on a map but wasn't really is that this district right here, right, what will be the new thirteen, was honestly part of Representative Oh, Andrew's district, which honestly made little sense. Because in order to get the rest of Representative Andrew's district, you had to jump across my district thirteen, Representative Prevenza's District Forty-five, to get to Centennial and Jelm and the whole rest of the rural part of the county. So in order to make Representative Andrew's district honestly make more sense, right, than jumping over two districts to go to a really urban area around Washington Park, it made a whole lot more sense to have his district kind of start at the river and go out through the rest of the rural part of the county. So that was the reason why Counselor Somerville, that it was drawn that way. That's.
Yeah, no, no, I, I appreciate that explanation and I, and I understand it. I don't think I agree with the reasoning and principle. Just because I really feel strongly, this is going to affect West Laramie and its representation. And it truly is a marginalized community. In Laramie, it has struggled for sixty years to be considered part of the city of Laramie. So I, I have some concerns there. I have a follow-up question for Jackie, and this is just maybe my ignorance in not having been through a redistricting process with city council. But Jackie, with, if this map were to be adopted, how would this affect the city council wards? Would Ward One, would we have to redraw all of those? Because I know we've tried to generally keep those within the legislative districts.
That's a great question, Andy. In fact, we have had a little bit of discussion in regards to that. Obviously, the three ward boundaries would change. And there's the potential that Ward One would still encompass, correct me if I'm wrong, would still encompass West Laramie.
So I get, Jackie, the, the follow-up question to that, maybe just to consider for your future conversations, is in this map, West Laramie is being kind of cut off and the population out here is, is being used to justify the, the large district for the rural areas. So to keep it straight, you wouldn't be able to have West, Ward One as just West Laramie. We'd have to come back across the tracks again. And to keep it within the boundary, that now, now puts Ward One going from the western boundary of the city to Fifteenth Street to keep it within the districts and keep it contiguous. That, to me, seems concerning and would ju- would definitely shift population. And Ward One would be, no doubt about it, significantly more populated than the other two legislative blocks in the city.
Actually, Andy, that's not correct. And please understand, we have just real prematurely looked at the ward boundaries. And we believe just that there's the potential that we could divide all three boundaries with approximately ten thousand four hundred population in all three, give or take some numbers. I don't have that information right off the top of my head, to be honest with you. And certainly, that would be something that we would work with city council as we progress through this process. And we know what the boundaries of the House districts and the Senate districts are within Albany County. And so we believe, though, that it's not going to divide. And we wouldn't be using the Laramie River as the dividing line for, or we would encompass West Laramie as part of the lines within Ward One, somewhat similar to what is being drawn here. A little bit more population maybe going to the north. But again, we're just playing with data right now. And certainly, it's not our responsibility. We want to team with the partners at the city to help create a plan and develop a plan that gives the three wards their as much equal representation as possible.
I appreciate that, Jackie. And I think my last question for you is, if, if this has to go back and the work has to be done by mid-December, it would seem important to me that we kind of have that sketched out and that the populations between the wards are balanced before that plan goes to the legislature. Is there any intention to kind of move that forward before December to have those conversations?
We had the conversation this afternoon with members of the administration with council and certainly are going to, they, we have given them our raw data to have an idea. I know that Sean Kraft, the city GIS director, is going to look at our data. We also have partners within the county. We have Jory from the planning office and Karen from the county assessor's office and my team that will work together with them. And so, you know, it's just all preliminary right now, Andy, solely because we don't know, at least we hope that if this is the plan that's put forth by the Albany County delegation and it is approved by the legislature, then we already have at least a basis of a starting plan. And we want to be proactive through this process and not reactive.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
Jackie?
Yes.
Karen? Erin O'Darty on Zoom. May I speak?
Yes, Karen.
I wanted to point out that to Counselor Somerville, that already Ward Three has, is half of House District Fourteen and House District Forty-six, the part that's within the city. So the clerk's office was very clever about drawing precincts within House District. So we're not constrained by the House District boundaries. And if you remember, Precinct Thirteen Two is in Ward One, even though it's, it's in House District Thirteen. So I don't think that the wards are a problem relative to the House districts because you could just carve up, I think, right, Jackie, you could carve up precincts within those House districts that allow you to, to equalize the wards. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and then the other thing, Senator Massey talked about moving the dorms across. I kept playing with that because to me, that makes the most sense. It would keep the representation, you know, before and after the dorms move. But there's sixteen hundred people. It's not a five percent difference. It's like a fourteen or fifteen percent difference from the average. So you can't just move it across Fifteenth and make things balance out. So in my view, and, and Counselor Somerville, I'm also lumped with the county. So in my view, this was a good balance because it's really hard to do the numbers. I've, I've played around with it myself and tried to get the numbers to match up. It's because we are constrained by the block groups, aren't we, Jackie?
Yes.
The block group boundaries. And so when you add things, it, it suddenly jumps up to too many people and then puts too few in the next, next district. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Senator Massey? And I owe you an apology. I believe that I, I mentioned you as our former representative. And so please, accept that apology because I should know better. And so. Okay, so make me feel better. Thank you.
You're, you're half right. And between ninety-four and ninety-eight, you were completely right. The sixteen hundred I had mentioned, by the way, was based upon the Senate district numbers. Senate District Nine and Senate District Ten, which I believe the average is nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. So sixteen hundred is considerably less than, than ten percent of, of that. So, and then, of course, if the Senate districts balance, you'll still have to tweak the boundaries of the two House districts seated in each of those Senate districts. So there'll be some boundary changes there. If indeed that alternative is even a viable one. And if it's viable, then it would be up to the delegation to determine if that's something they would want to go with. But just to be clear, the, the numbers do work when you look at it on the Senate district level.
And that's where I will joke around, that that's what a senator does. A senator plays with the Senate districts. We play with the House district lines.
Are there other comments from the public that are participating via Zoom? Any additional comments from the public in attendance? Representatives, do you have other thoughts, questions, ideas?
Yeah, I, I guess for, for me, I, you know, I am concerned as the representative of West Laramie currently about what the thoughts are. So I would like to have more of a nuanced conversation with the folks in that neighborhood, you know, because we've heard different things. Most of what I've heard is people saying that they like their rural feel, that they like the idea that they get to kind of follow their, their own rules. And they want to be able to feel more like a county. But I do recognize that there are pockets of West Laramie that maybe don't feel that way and feel underrepresented. And so there is an important conversation that needs to happen. And I hope that Councilwoman Somerville will aid in those, in those conversations and have, and have conversations with me following this meeting because I, I, I think that the way that this is drawn out, the numbers work out. And it's unfortunate that we don't have a ton of wiggle room or other metropolitan areas to, to do these things. So the best that we can do, I think, might be this one. But I do want to, I do want to make sure that those people do have a voice because I am the representative. And so I just, I would urge Councilwoman Somerville to reach out to me and I'd be happy to have a conversation with her.
So Jackie, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming and being here and the comments and the kind of thoughtful looks at maps. Very much so. This could be our last public meeting if the timeline goes forward the way that it is right now. And again, we're not a hundred percent sure. Mr. Swank said that as well, with what's going on. Know that I think, that all of us, that all six of us have kind of committed to keeping region two whole, that that makes sense to, to all of us. That being said, I am concerned, like I had mentioned earlier on, that as the process moves forward and there are no more public meetings at least scheduled, that there will be attempts to come into region, to come into our region either from the west or honestly from the east. And that we might like love to hear from you, either formally or informally, and put out a call for your thoughts about which direction to go if we have to go in one of those directions.
Where can we keep track of the status of what's going on? Do we have the most up-to-date information?
I would say with the Corporations and Political Subdivision Committee meetings.
And the map should be made available. So as all of the regions are putting in those maps, they should become available on the LSO kind of website and portal as draft maps.
We also will continue to update the county website with any new information, especially with forthcoming meetings that may occur. I know there was discussion that maybe, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, that the meeting in December may be held in Cheyenne. And so for us, the proximity is really, really close, but certainly things may change. And so we will do our best to keep you abreast of the changes that are being made or provide you with as much up-to-date information as we possibly can.
Yeah, and thank you, Jackie, and your staff for your kind of leadership in this process, what your website looks like and the public access, all of that. I think it's really valuable.
Thank you. Any other comments? We know, representatives, how busy you are, and we certainly appreciate that you've taken time to allow the public to participate. Having this open dialogue and listening to the needs and the concerns of the constituents that you serve is wonderful. And allowing us to be a part of it, we look forward to continuing our working relationship and the good that's being done by you all. Thank you so much.
Thanks.